I'd like to call the Poughkeepsie County Education Gregory University, Lady Ditch to order. All members are present. Will we stand and open with the flag of the Linsley flag?
Flag of the Linsley flag. I need one second. It's a good call. We just say it's. One second.
Item number one with the agenda, approval of the minutes from the Board of Education, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And this was the reconvened levy meeting, approximately approval of the minutes from the Board of Education meeting held on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Approval of the minutes from the Board of Education meeting held on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Mr. McColl's made a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. McNabb seconded. Any questions about the minutes from the last meetings? No? Scaring none, all leaving some favors if I'm saying aye. Motion carried. Item number two is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? I need to throw my motion in first. Do I have a motion? Mr. McColl's made a motion. Do I have a second?
My second.
Mr. McNabb seconded. Okay. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, if you'll look at number fourteen, which is the following math textbooks. So we need to, we have a, we have the high school math books on there instead of the week six. So where it says I am one, I am math two, and I am algebra two, math three. We need to delete those. And the companies that we are using for the math adoption is Imagine Learning. And I'll see. And that will be for grades six and seven. We'll retain as mentioned there, the Eureka Grade Month, grade eight.
What was the first name of that?
Imagine.
Imagine.
Did anyone sign behind you, you lost?
Any, any other ones? Okay. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Motion carried. Delegations.
We have one.
Superintendent for facial recognition Battle of the Books and Skills USA.
Sure, uh, Mr. Gibson here would like to join me. I'm putting him on the spot.
Well, not there to you.
Let me give you a digest on the high school projects. Do you know where people work and the gymnasium floor? Uh, when I asked Mr. Gibson, I said, why can't you find an update? We don't have a lot of information, but would you like to share the bidding process?
I've had lots of all trying to get something done. It's really slow, so we do have the opening for the games, which is Thursday this week. So I think there's a lot of contractors interested in it in the gym floor replacement left for upgrades. Actually, they'll probably be down tomorrow if I can, so we'll be looking kind of last minute things for left for upgrades. Things aren't progressing. It's like I said, it takes a while.
The clerk of the works, we did interview, um, an applicant on Monday, and we only had one ad, and we posted the clerk of the works two different times with the ads in the paper as instructed by the school building authority. We have reached out to our contact at the school building authority, seeing we in way a clerk of the works for this project. Due to, you know, we have Mr. Gibson on the staff who has the construction bathroom, as well as our maintenance staff that are also very qualified. And so I have that actually letter in your box to approve. And then I will be sending that to the school building authority to see if they will let us just utilize the people that we have.
They don't. I've been contacted by Hoover, Dewey, Dewey City's called two, three times without a reply. Phone time, but he, he would be interested if that doesn't work out. We gotta go find him, run him down.
I reached out, so. Did anybody?
So next, I wanted to, anything else, Mr. Gibson, that you would like to add? Um, so next I wanted to share, because I know Joseph mentioned the standard of excellence, which is uh, taking over the super scholars. And I wanted to show you where the information can be found. Kristy Hamilton's done a course amazing job. But if you go into menu on our website, into student resources, you will find the standard of excellence and the explanations for grades three through eight. And the students can win or get an award for math, reading language arts, science, or all individually, or they can get a group recognition as well. The general requirements for your grades nine through twelve. And, um, this is what they receive down here. A digital badge to put on their emails, a locker magnet, a science certificate, uh, recognition of a school ceremony, and recognition of local newspapers and radio and social media websites. So I just wanted to let you know, if anyone has any questions, you know, look at the website. Um, we do have that information available.
Mr. Samuel moving. Because this year it's based, of course, on last year's GSA, which is almost a assessment results. So we have decided to recognize the students since spring and then each middle of the school. And next fall, then have the big celebration, this weekend, in Texas. And as I think I mentioned before in the meeting, they stay has told us that we will be able to, with the parents as well, get those assessment results this year in like a couple of days after the student has finished. So I'd be very pleased with that, other than the writing, English language, or English language angles, because it's not scored. We're excited. And I think this is, um, since we're explaining across the country, they're through the last time to change them. I'd like to thank Mr. Gibson. This is Mr. Gibson. I want to know if you're a bus stop or a home.
My bus stop is, no, it has not yet.
So do you like to tell them, do you know that I do?
Okay. So I've been abandoned on bus stop. I've been abandoned along the side of Rapid, in the tree. And I've got it fixed up. Presenting families out there that. Your children need a place to. Children while they're waiting on the bus. Get a hold of Mr. Gibson. We will take it there and set it up free of charge. And, uh, for whoever may need it. That's what, that's, that's it. It's not a big deal. I'll fix the bus.
Also, with the initiative, you know, last, the last board meeting, we recognized that we are now, um, the regional winners and the state. Actually, the video crews will be joining us at Cranberry Visitor Center and the third grade type there this February. They will be doing a short video in order to show it at the summit, which is on May fifteenth. And they'll show all the regional winners, just a little snippet. So you'll know New York State winner.
That'd be awesome.
Yes. I, Tracy Palash and I will be attending that meeting.
Great. So I think she could change this one.
You so too. I, when I heard the bell, I said, this is a blessing. We got this. So. And I wanted to let you know that we are continuing with our Tuesday talks with our presidents. We do know every Tuesday, nine thirty. Today, we talked about evaluations and the deadline's coming up. We also talked about next year's snow days. They have been working on that as they're emailing their plans for next year's snow packets or work. We talked about the standard of excellence and, and I don't mind the shepherd, but we were there for about forty minutes. Isn't it your checklist? Yes. But it's your family.
Good one.
He was. Bus room, yes. Bus room tomorrow. And it's like, oh, we just happened to be. We don't have our next principals meeting at the end of the month, but we do have this, just to refresh and revisit and touch everybody to make sure they're. Um, I know a lot of people think that we're off this, you know, we're, you know, school year's ending and we're winding down. Now, forget often what year we're in, because we started working on twenty-five, twenty-six months ago. Uh, so just to give you a little idea, the evaluations, of course, are going on. Those are due by June first. Our summer programs, uh, in these trim halls and firms and everybody here, they're busy working with the summer projects. Intended to your purchase orders, balancing what you move the food, with the cooks, making sure we have what we need. And also not ordering too much excess, because we are getting close to the end of the year. Preparing professional development for the next school year, reflecting on this year. Um, payroll, insurance, uh, period opened, special education, I U Ps, the transitions to the next grade levels have to be completed. Ordering of textbooks for next year, um, creating a summer schedule for students, for maintenance, several programs occurring. And I did want to mention that Stephanie Burns, Christine Pratipo, and Christine Hammond also just recently submitted a twenty-first century after-school grant, which will be for middle, we don't have enough to high school. Did you talk about that last, the last four years? But I just wanted, we did get that submitted, um, submission time was four o'clock. We hit the button at three forty-five. And so, oh, wait a minute, and then we would love to recognize our best of works and others. And, right, also, we've been talking to you.
So first I wanted to share with you, um, a little background on Battle of the Books. Battle of the Books is not, um, it's pretty new for the United States. We have competed and worked on Battle of the Books for probably the last six years. We had a little trouble, hindrance around COVID, and then we still tried to continue it, and it was within the count. Um, right before COVID, we tried to compete regionally. And I think it was like three days, three days after shutdown of COVID, we were supposed to compete regionally, and we haven't been able to do that. This year we did. Um, we had twenty-six participants, and that was our elementary and middle school. We had three teams, one for each elementary school, and two teams, one for each middle school. And they've been working on this right here. They get the list of books at the end of the previous school year, and they read those above and beyond, whatever else they're required to read for their grade levels. It is third through eighth grade, um, and there are teams of five, and you're able to take an alternate. So we were able to have a couple of alternates. And I also want to commend these students because they didn't necessarily have any toughness. Um, we were so complimentary to all of our students, because they have never competed regionally. They also have never competed in that atmosphere. I think they could probably, um, share with you that it was very competitive, and it's a level that we have never competed at. Um, do you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just, we may actually be honoring some of them the May twentieth, because everyone is so busy and communication was kind of tough getting to all the students. So we're going to recognize some today, and then hopefully maybe some more will come May twentieth. And we have five teams, two teams of middle school, three teams at elementary. Uh, elementary had twelve teams they had to compete against, and Brimberg County had been competing with Battle of the Books for thirty-four years. Um, middle school has competed at Brimberg County for twenty years. So that kind of tells you the competition. And I will say that our elementary teams, they were very well prepared, even though they didn't necessarily have a coach to support them. Um, but they were competing against team members from other schools that would answer a question after the first two words were asked within the question. Like what, um, tree, or what, you know, what mountain? And they had to know characters, they had to know the titles, they had to know the author, they had to know even a guess.
Yeah. Even title, author, character, and then the lecture was very in-depth question like, what color was the pencil pouch that so and so needed?
Yes. So they had to know.
I'll say your names.
Six different, six textbooks. Um, six for elementary and six for middle. Here are a few of them. They're not teaching reading, but that's. I think three.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that I did get a text message from a teacher from Brimberg County and just saying how wonderful our students were, how, you know, they were just very polite, um, very responsive. They, they, she really had wonderful things. And this is, that's a few thoughts she did not mean.
Um, and before I introduce them, I do want to encourage anyone that's interested in supporting the schools. Uh, please be a volunteer to help. We have a great volunteer who kills for elementary, Susan Arbogast. She helps support their team. Um, but we do not have a volunteer coach at any other school. Um, so what happens are that if the teacher is not on return to reunion, or if his teacher is not there, then they are on their own, and that's truly what happened to our, um.
Yeah, I came back the day of Battle of the Books and went out and saw the program. I was like, oh my gosh, we're in trouble. But they did, just amazing.
Yeah, they did really well, and it was double elimination, and I believe all of our elementary teams won at least one game. Um, and our middle school team made it to the finals, where they placed second, and they were able to leave with. Um, and everyone in the viewer section were amazed at how well they did. So with that being said, and I don't think we have a lot of people here, uh, but if I mention your name and you're here, Adlin Beveridge, Hayden Skar, Elena Sharp, not here. AJ, of course. Carmen Teddy. Jersey Jackson. Tiffany Guyette. The next one's, whoa. This Emma View. Ben Markes. Sullivan Selvich. Simon Spochi. Symphony, I, Ella. It, Kendall, she's here. And Audrey F. Yeah, I guess we just started. Daniel's not here. Sarah's not here. As, Isaac, I, Dave Brown, Rex and you. You want to mend out the middle school?
Sure.
Wake up, Miss Rang.
Sure. So. I think it's on my desk. I'll run and get it. Sorry.
With Silas B, there's one here. Kara Sloan, there's one here. Wait, the other one is here. Uh, Braden Passon, there's one here, and you have these. Green Bank, middle school, the line of the phone. Harley Oakes. Ryan and her. Scotters, Ben Irving, and Madeline Reynolds.
And Amelia Rogers.
They're all good. Oh my gosh, look good.
Would you say like.
Well, not now, Mike. That's look good.
All right.
We also have your host, Sven Schuster, and John is here to tell us about that for a brief.
That's good. All right. It was, uh, Karen Watson, March twenty-eighth, twenty-five. Skills as they trade, but they can teach. So if you do carbure, you can teach against other students. The lady math, I think there's, what's it, the boy's competitions, you just stay alive. And today we have Noddy Curd, that's done cover, dude, got third as freshman. House thirteen, our seventeen fetish, and they've all been your seniors, she's proud. She also has fourth place in the cup. She did podium. Fourth place was related math. And we had teamwork as well. Hit fourth.
You can't front. I'm worried. I don't know what the type of mic I put it on.
Thank you. So if you want to go ahead and do the national honor society session. Okay, before we're ready to play.
Well, it's the next, item number five, do you have anything else? Item number five, information, package and jump dates. Judge of Van Meter, what's going on?
So I have a few, can you tell us? Um, first, the high school had a course there today where you guys walked around the stations and talked to teachers. Um, a lot of seniors, upcoming seniors, a little unsettled by their schedule, because some of them believe where they need two classes next year. Um, so they really have to just fill their schedule with feeling like this is that they can be completely happy about, but their grandkids seem to man, maybe they say.
Um, and you realize there's a lot of, um, pushback on college courses. Um, there's a lot of, like, hearsay around the school about what our administration's saying, um, about how college courses affect that. Um, right now, we're being told that taking more college classes, um, you receive less pass the money, but that's not true at all. Um, the only problem with taking more college classes is through WBU. Uh, you can take more, and those college classes don't really, I'm sure you're applying for it. You'll get less, um, aid around your senior year if I just follow that. But that kind of seems much into just WBU, because that's not really, um, applicable to all universities in our state. Um, so that was kind of like disappointing that there's pushing on taking more college courses. Um.
And it did for two.
Online college courses, that just didn't seem to me, um, some, like, majors, like, first aid that then, um, to our administration, didn't seem like it fits, um, a major pathway in school. I can see why not, honestly, but that was just the case. Yeah, I mean, we're beginning to push back. Um, so I talked to Ms. Griffin today, um, that's mostly, mostly about that pushback. Miss Griffin's pushing back, not really like we're offering college courses, it's just, um, they're saying to be very cautious about what you're taking because of the fast, but it's not too tight.
So, I mean, is this something that maybe you're really studying your schedule and aligned with what you're looking at? You get the senior class for.
Right, that could be the case, but if we're following the head plans, it really shouldn't be approved that you're taking classes that don't really follow what you're going into. Like, why would you take a pack if you're going into, say, finance, it just doesn't make sense to you? Unless it's like a fun class that you're taking.
What's your advice on the solution?
Um, I just don't see why we can't offer more special classes, personally. Um, I know that they want to keep students familiar, you know, like the classes, which we have a huge right. Um, they all seem, sound really great. Um, the thing is, I've already, the time students taking those classes.
It's one of those students.
The nothing on the past, but it is. The price that you pay for a customized password is a fraction of what it is. If you do get a little bit faster, does it make a difference? I don't think so.
No. Um, that's when it comes from income base as well, situation based, we have some things separated, things like you get one, probably grant one. Um, I just don't see, like, where that's.
Um, there was a student, a senior last year, um, and she took so many college classes that she got to skip into her sophomore year um, into college, and she got to jump right into her clinicals, which usually you have to sit for kind of a rolling first year to get to the clinical part.
Several students have done that. How about the dual credit classes? We still offer dual credit classes, so, and that's just something that's going to continue.
Yes. Um, another thing, the school did a college day handbook this year, um, and it kind of, I don't know if, uh, I know in special circumstances, I would, pressing it, it was wrong, I think it was either, uh, no. But it's left a lot of confusion on, say, whether we were talking to, we were discussing, she or he is four. Um, also with class ranking, right now, it's like, is that eighteen core classes, it's higher ranking? Last year it was, um, a G K base. And I said that they changed, they're referring to two years ago, because it's more descriptive. Um, I don't understand how you could be more descriptive than it's by GPA rates for graduation purposes. Maybe you have to say valid for, like, based by GPA, so they do just do it by GPA. Um, but right now with the honor records, which is graded by GPA, three point eight, um, but then facing it like valid for any solution, all the difference of, and it just kind of seems inconsistent.
You know, we're in a, we're in a procedure review phase, you know, so I'm really hoping that Ms. Griffin and you know, the same page that, uh, we, uh, we place, we place.
Mrs. Mrs. Khan, sure, by next year, there'll be a handbook.
That's right.
She said there'll be a handbook come out.
No, it's not what you look right now, but, uh, it's what we got.
Yes. What, questions for my telling that handbook, that, you know?
It was starting.
It looks like you were.
It looks like you would go back to the following year instead of going two years back though.
The fall, it's way out and I rip it down here that they have in the government scandal. It's. Well, but they will look to the previous, the back to find the information about how. That's why they do that to you. Cause I listen. There were some kinds of smart change.
We got. Uh, all she said was it's class ranking and it's a classroom. Um, calculated by GPA. Um, I assume they took two years ago because it's supposedly set valid. Capitality is. I just don't see like, uh, they're gonna have an inconsistency with. Um, I'm perhaps actually one way and valid for.
We also support principles to.
And everything was said that you want.
I'm a little worried about this. If if we're going to do it, we should do it forever, all the same way forever. Her autographs, valedictorian, solid valedictorian. I don't think you can change the rules in the middle of the game.
Absolutely. That's weird because, um. Students wouldn't have been as upset about this if they knew. School year, it's kind of like. Um, let some people down. They worked really very hard. They do deserve a spot. If you're receiving a valedictorian scholarship from the school, um, and it does say your class ranking, not really one, why aren't you allowed?
Exactly. Does this have any, you know, real implications, like, you know, real worry? I don't know what we're trying to say, so I'm just saying here.
We're going to have some students upset. Yeah, we're going to have some students upset because of how it changed in the middle of the game. Uh, Mrs. Baltic, at our next meeting, could you have the principal and lead the students come in? To the board and explain exactly how they're doing this and how they come up with this.
Have you heard?
Have you heard anything from the students, staff, families about the calendar? On this year's calendar, is that even the same right thing about that?
There's a lot of students, um, a lot of people excited for the long summer that's coming here. Um, and a lot of, I heard a lot of things, uh, people are saying they wouldn't be as upset. Then again, calendars. Um, so I don't see how you could constantly say, say, and sustain it, um. But yeah, there's so much mixed in with that.
Thank you very much. Christie Trent, uh, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Special Education Exit Training, Pre-K Curriculum Adoption, Special Education Strive.
So I had thought that I attended the National Honor Society induction and the National Technical Honor Society. There was a lot of people there. I don't know if any of you all were able to attend, but it was very, very good. Um, the students who had speaking parts did an exceptional job, so I have asked them and their, um, the staff to come and present. And so I'm going to get over the stuff that I had real quick and then the pre-K teachers, if they would come and speak about the pre-K curriculum that we are asking to be adopted tonight. So the first thing I have is the special education training. We had a training last week. And the, um, high school teachers will be using the exit forms for students with disabilities. Yeah, the list between the department that puts out, we haven't used it in the past. We had our own in the county, but we are moving toward using all of the department's forms now. Um, the special ed strive conference, we took a team up there last week. They were all from Mumbai and seven months of our win. It was close, all from Texas, um, gum, March of Berbers and seven hundred. We in line for a grant while we were there for seven thousand dollars. And we have to train and plan to the department for that grant as to how we plan to provide this training to the rest of our staff. Um, I'm going to let Darla go and talk about pre-k and then we'll go to the National. All right, we attended the curriculum canvas with Stephanie and Christie. And this year, six years ago, when we adopted the preschool curriculum, we had two, two options. Because those were the ones that were aligned with West Virginia standards. In past six years, quite a few companies have aligned their curriculums to West Virginia standards, so we had six or seven different ones to look at. So we narrowed it down and we settled on service, three cheers, um, preschool curriculum. And the, our favorite piece of this curriculum is the assessment piece. In preschool, because children learn through play and they can't stand to take a test because they don't have it yet. Uh, a lot of your assessment has to be through observation. And so this curriculum has a form for each week for each child that looks at the standards that you are hitting that week with what you are. The types of plays you are setting up for them, the types of lessons that you're doing with them. So it will be a much more consistent, constant and accurate observational assessment. Then we'll all be doing the same thing. Um, I personally brought a base of all assessment on there. Very hard to keep track of, to take the time to write down. This is the checklist. How are they doing? They need brands. How are they doing on sharing? And how are they doing on holding their pencil? You know, the, the specific things. And by the end of the year, you will have hit all the standards in West Virginia for preschool. It also has the, has nine themes, so we have one per month of school. Um, and they're, they're very nice themes compared to what our current ones are. Currently, we have a ball study. Supposed to set balls for six to eight weeks. But these studies are much better. Marvelous Being, every day helpers, which talks about community helpers and, and, um, people that they adults that they've. Meets in their lives. Um, it has one farm stable. Where does that food come from? Animals. They love animals. Let's tie that into their math and into their science and life cycles. And there's an earth moon and sky one, which those of us in Green Bank will get next door. Right, I, which we're going to do this year, but it takes care of the tide and even nicer to our breaking. Um, and then that theme travels throughout the day from morning meetings and greeting songs to specific activities you have in the learning centers, play centers throughout the day. Um, even transition songs that tie to the theme. Um, small groups related to literacy, small groups related to math, and math was another thing we really liked about this one. Because it has very intentional lessons of getting math in every day, whereas our current one is less direct and sort of feeling. It could be used better at math. And so we feel like this one will help us do that. Um, vocabulary, sign language, social studies, health, social emotion. The math dots that is used in your social emotional, um, lessons tied throughout the day. And then the end of the day with a reflection. On the different things that they learned throughout the day. And it is connected to the West Virginia, like West Virginia standards. And it also has a strong, um, family engagement piece. So there'll be a digital newsletter that has links to reading stories that can be read aloud. Videos tied to vocabulary that we're talking about. Um, so it feels, it feels more comprehensive than what we're currently using. We're very, very.
Good. It's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, darling. A little bit to National Honor Society and National Technical Honors. To you.
My.
That's right. Gonna do a little. We're gonna do a little screen.
Right here, so I'm, you may not see, uh, your camera for just a second. Wow.
Just. Like one shares with she, once she shares with you, share the screens and then. Look at check your email. Okay, that's what I was just gonna. Non-shit or on screen at first. Okay, yeah.
All right.
Thirty minutes pop up. Just. Is it not clicking? Then you might have to. Got to the board machine presentation.
Did you grant me access?
I have this one. Okay. Now, I'm just gonna just do that right there. Oh. Try to look on it. No, no, do it. Okay. Here, do this little green, share first screen. Just say, what's my guess? The screen. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, there you go. That one was too. Okay.
My name is Cindy Solak and this is Brianna Morgan, and we are co-advisors for National Honor Society. We want to thank you very much for allowing us to tell you a little bit about National Honor Society. We have made some changes this year since we've taken over. I am sure after every selection process the last couple of years, at least one of you board members have gotten a phone call about a parent complaining. And did any of you get a phone call this year?
No, no.
Did you hear from a parent at all? Okay. So we may have succeeded. So Ms. Morgan and I sat down and thought about some of the things that needed to be changed. To prevent some upset parents or even upset students. And in doing so, we also worked with the current chapter that we inherited and we had a very wonderful year. So this is two parts. We want to explain the process and then we're going to tell you about what we've done this year. Okay, so, um, one of the first concerns that we wanted to take care of was the clarification of the selection process. We found that when our students applied, they didn't quite understand how to exemplify themselves on the application. And, um, so we went ahead and we talked to them about that. And in doing so, we eliminated the whole. Don't sign up for National Honor Society because if there's a teacher that doesn't like you, you're not going to get in. Or if they don't like your parents, you're not going to get in. I'm not in the popular cloud, crowd. So we spent time working with the students and explaining that there was a selection process and how it worked. Okay, and that just so you know, National Honor Society is an organization founded to honor students. To excel in the areas they have four pillars they need to work with. Leadership, scholarship, service and character. Um, and so we had a whole PowerPoint that we presented to them once they were given the selection saying, you have a GPA. Of three point three zero five, that zero five does make a big difference. Um, and now you can go ahead and apply for National Honor Society. And we also made sure they understood it was an honor. It was not a right. Just because it had that three point three zero five, they still had to meet the other pillars. Um, so then we explained in different steps what they needed to do. And these steps are very important. Um, once they filled out the application, we sent a survey to the teachers saying that certain students build things out. And would you rate them? Now, in the past, teachers can rate on how they felt. Okay, we eliminated that. We gave them a list of things that we wanted them to rate the students on. We said a zero to four score and we gave them a rubric. To use on how to rate the students for each hair, for each category. Um, and then if they actually gave a two or below, we wanted to know why. So that there was no bias. There was no personal. They didn't like that student, so they were just going to go ahead and, and give them zeros across the board. So we held them accountable. One of the other things is we, um, talked about what is called the faculty council members. They are selected by the current administration. The students do not know who these members are. Um, and then what we will do is once we get the application, we redapt everything that is in the application. Um, so that when it goes to your faculty council, they have no idea what student they're looking at. So that's why it's important when we met with the students to explain that if you have leadership skills, don't be shy. Put it all out there. If you work for your church, put it out there. If you go and snow shovel snow for your elderly neighbors, we want to know. That's not a little thing. That shows that you have character, you have integrity. So then what our, um, advisors see is we also, here's the other thing, we also gave them a rubric. So for each category, we said, okay, let's say leadership. If you, if this person has at least three leaderships, um, skills on their application, then they get a five. Why that score is important is in the end, we have to have twenty or above before you can even be, um, selected to join the National Honor Society. The highest you can score is twenty five. So there's not a lot of legal provision there. Okay, um, so for every category, we went ahead and, um, gave them, gave the teachers, the counselor or the advisors a rubric. Um, and then in the end, this is what it looked like. And each applicant had a number, again, no names, so our advisors do not know who they're scoring. They might figure it out if it's the president of senior class, okay, but, um. And then they score. We had a rubric on the essay, everything, and this student unfortunately did not make it. Um. What Ms. Morgan and I did in all of these rubrics is we contacted other schools in the state of West Virginia. To get their ideas on how they were successful in with their National Honor Society and their process. So, um, that's what we did. We also made them understand that decisions were final. We can't, her and I cannot do anything. We have nothing to do with this, across papers and put it to the advisory council. Then, um. We did give the students who did not make it an opportunity to come meet with us. And we would go through the rubrics with them and explain what areas that they can improve on, and we hoped that they would come back the next year. If they were juniors. Um, and let's see, we also explained what's required in them. And then Ms. Morgan's gonna explain the fun stuff.
All right, so, um, when we inherited this group that you see in these pictures in the fall of twenty twenty four, we.
Also inherited a zero bank account.
Yeah, we were, we were very, very low on money. So to be one hundred percent honest with you, we didn't even have money to pay our dues for this chapter. So we, myself, Mrs. Solak and the members that were currently in the, um, in the chapter. Went around to local businesses and got donations, either gift certificates or items that we were going to put in raffle baskets or monetary donations. And we were successful enough to get enough gift certificates and other don, or yeah, other donations. To create those five, uh, baskets that you see there in the front, and we sold raffle tickets for those. And we actually raised enough money to buy matching shirts for the entire chapter. We, we raised, um, we were able to pay our dues and we had some money left over that I'm going to discuss what we're going to do with, uh, toward the end here. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry. Um, and then we partnered with the women's club, the Martin. The Martin Women's Club and hosted the veterans lunch. They helped serve the veterans their dinner and then they helped clean up the mess as well. We also hosted a school-wide school drive at the high school and we were able. And we were able to collect and donate six large, um, boxes of food for the Pocahontas FRN.
And I'm going to interrupt you for a second. One of the things that I want, this was Caleb's design. We asked the students to ownership. They're the ones who come up with all the service projects. What we do with the money going back into the community. Ms. Morgan and I just literally make sure it gets done. We're the cheerleaders, um, and their decisions have been absolutely awesome. We reached out and said, hey, who can make the flyer for the food drive? Caleb said, got it. Um, and that's exactly how this chapter has been all year. We need certificates. Got it. Very great. They've been awesome.
Yeah. Um, and then toward Christmas time, we adopted a Christmas tree angel from the Pocahontas FRN. And here's the angel. So you can see that there were some twelve to eighteen month clothes and winter clothes and a baby gate. And the angel's, um, favorite color was purple. So this group of kids here got together, um, and Mrs. Solak and myself even donated a little bit to help them out. And you can see all of the goodies that were collected, bought and brought in, uh, by these National Honor Society members and donated to this angel.
And then we used some of the funds that they raised in the raffle basket to buy supplies of diapers and a large gift certificate to IGA for the family for meals.
Okay, so as a chapter, we have also completed, and this fundraiser here is with our new members that we have inducted within the last month. We've completed a Krispy Kreme donut fundraiser in union with the freshman class. We were very successful with that and we, um, raised a pretty good chunk of money. Um, and in the coming weeks, we will be making a three hundred and fifty dollar donation back to the community, to the Pocahontas County Humane Society with those, um, extra, um, funds that we have raised throughout the year. We will also be going to Green Bank Elementary and Marlonton Elementary Schools with, um, some of these students that still need some service project hours um, for the students to go in and read to those students and even help out with whatever the teachers need. All right, so here's a picture from the last induction and these are our current members as well as the new members that we, like I said, inducted within the last month. Um, our members here, uh, there's twenty-eight of them. We have twenty-two seniors this year. So all get their nice gold stalls for graduation and which unfortunately leaves us with six members next year. Taking a huge cut there. Um, but.
But we did change the bylaws. And we're going to, this chapter decided that, um, we can do an induction in November instead of April. So if we do get upcoming seniors, we'll be able to enjoy them for their senior year. So, and then we'll.
Yes, and before I let these members that have joined us this evening introduce themselves, I want to take just a minute to recognize that Will O'Gannon did get a three thousand dollar scholarship from National Honor Society, from like the national, national, or the national chapter of National Honor Society. So that he has three thousand dollars to go into his, um, freshman year college. All right, and we do have some members that have joined us this evening and I'd like them to take just a second to recognize themselves. And if they're a senior, tell you where they plan to attend college. Go ahead.
My name is Ella Moore Hook. This fall, I will be attending Caron State University to major in natural sciences, legends, and minor in political science. Might just be a episode soon.
Ian Smith, I plan to attend West Liberty University and I'm going to major in biology during their pre-vet internship.
Right. My name is Lauren Lawler. I'm going to communicate. Major in biology.
I'm a medical, I'm a junior. Being a pediatrician, my name is Lisa Markspresh.
I'm Allison Bro. I'm a junior.
I'm Robert. I plan to be a driver to an LP and.
I plan to go into the business, business administration act. My name is Pat Ray. I have a lot of education. And, um, my select community after college.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Rutter. Um, I'm going to be attending the U of U study accounting and a minor in, uh, real estate.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Technical.
Also a member of the National Tech Force Society. Mr. Gibson and Speller.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
How many of these students have AP exams tomorrow? We will get a free video. No, my exam was today. Well, actually mine is. I don't think I'm taking a desert.
Thank you, Ms. Solak.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Solak. This long. Long trip.
Stay in line for your.
How long's it taken? She didn't bring you up in general, but her shouldn't. She was asleep, please. If she was asleep, you can drive a little faster. You gotta stop that because he's making on the wheel.
I'm going to stay.
Yeah. What news? Mr. Burns lady. That's true about what said.
Well, they get us. So they said about thirty-five years ago. Paid and went to April Prince and another town. And she brought a bunch.
How do you get on the team? It's like the best. Yeah. She said you need to coach your mentor.
Our number six on the agenda is approval of the following consent financial requirements. Payment to vendor listing two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven. Payment to a local government subscription card, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine ninety-five. April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five employee, your rep payroll, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Extra duty paid for the month of April, twenty twenty-five, seventeen thousand, nine point four, ninety-three grand awards and budget adjustments. Do I have a motion? Then, uh, Mr. Holmes, make the motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Hollins, we're second. Any questions on number six? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries under miscellaneous. Number seven, approve of the two thousand twenty-four audit financial statement, audit statement and discussion presented at the previous meeting. Do I have a motion? Say, uh, Mr. Holmes, make the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. McMan, second. Number seven. Anybody have any questions on number seven? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Number eight, approval for Kim Schinnerberry and Brittany Place. Detective block approximately twenty-six students from Green Bank Elementary Middle School to the Green Bar Valley Quidditch Center in Fairleigh, West Benioff, made it twenty-seventh for a reward trip. Transportation will be provided by bus. Do I have a motion? Holmes made a motion. I have a second. Mrs. Hollins, we're second. Any questions on the trip? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Carries. Item number nine, approval of memorandizing of outstanding MOU County Board of Education and the Southern Educational Service Corporation to provide bus operated training examination services for July the first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Have a motion? Say. Motion, have a second? Say. Make a second. Any questions on number nine? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Carries. Number ten, approval for, uh, of the contract between the Development, Advantage and the Pocahontas County Board of Education to provide additional services for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five school, twenty-six school year. Motion. And they don't make that second.
Ten.
Well, they're coming slow and I feel. Any questions on number ten? What is that exactly? What is?
That is actually due at our, um, special education in order to provide a certain service here again.
We can't take care of that. I can't, I can't get you that.
Yeah, yeah. Special certification, um, for to do the.
Been over there for two rabbits last weekend. I forgot. You're going to stick there. In the country. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, motion carries. Number eleven, approval of high school courses standards for the following courses. Philosophical and writing and young adult literature. Do I have a motion? Say, uh, make a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Mrs. Hollins, we're second. Any questions on that? Number eleven. Has potential, yes, well, I think, uh, probably we won't. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries number twelve, approval policy fifty-four ten promotions, acceleration, placement, and retentions. Motion, uh, Holmes made a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hollins, we're second. And now it's number twelve. Now, is this that new retention policy that's in this one?
Yes, so we put it out for the thirty days of the comment. You see the content well. You only have two comments from the public.
So are all of our principals and everybody on the same page? You're the same? Okay. It's the same policy for the whole county?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Number fourteen, approval of a national fundraiser in Green Bank Elementary Middle School for cautious care. Caution, cautious, cautious care, a cautious puzzle. Mr. Holmes, make a motion. I have a second. Miss Hollins, we're second. You know, it's cool. Caution, caution's expensive. It's a, it's a big deal for them, you know, the fundraiser. She, she has a special diet. She has better diet. She has care. All those in favor? Uh. It's number fourteen. This is what we had to change in, uh, Mrs. Ballstix. I may have to ask you this again. Approval of the following textbooks for the sixth and seventh grade. It's, what is it? Henry Learning LLC.
Correct. And that's just for grades six and.
Got it. And it's to retain and recover great minds for eighth grade, seventh grade world geography, hopefully do. And that's an educational company. Always, you know, I have a motion. Oh, free cash, free cheers. Company LLC. There you go. Now, I have a motion. Say, uh, Mr. Holmes made a motion. Holmes, we're second. Everybody understands. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, motion carries. Approval of the twenty, two thousand twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six Pocahontas County Board of Education meeting schedule. Uh, Mr. Holmes, make a motion.
Okay.
And Mrs. Hollins, we're second. What is this? The same one we've had this, starting every two meetings a month? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Item number sixteen. Thanks so much, Susan. Now, one, uh. Going to take away. I appreciate it. All right. But what the record shows, Mr. Gibson voted against number fifteen. And he. Number sixteen, action, appointment of a superintendent of Pocahontas County Schools to begin a term on July the first, two thousand and twenty-five for no less than one year or no more than four years. Do I have a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we, uh. I'm going to make a motion first. Mr. McMan, make some motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. McCall's second. Any discussion? I recommend that we, we hire, uh, Dr. Williams. Would you like to add anything? The motion has been made and seconded. We hired Dr. Williams as superintendent of Pocahontas County Schools, beginning on July the first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five zero. Mrs. Hollins. Mrs. Gibson, will you come for? Or Mr. Williams?
Change your name.
I'm Mr. Gibson. You say, oh, it's thrown out. We need to sign for it says.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We don't have any puppies. We can do it.
We need to stand there.
She wants all of her husband in it too, this is it. Yeah.
Mr. Williams, come on up here.
I don't, I don't break it. How bad do you want? I mean, it's.
Hey, because he's interested in here and he's so excited about coming here and come to my back. Seriously, we do, we work on that, so. And we do want to spread blood, believe in, um, part of the culture. Um, my grandmother's from here. My dad has a sister here. God, it's like a homecoming. It's all in here.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, that's good.
Well, there is a bit losing the salad.
Okay, what was that? Okay. Uh seventeen is approval of service and, and professional personnel. Do we want to go into the executive section on personnel matters or we go into the uh? We better let, let's do that. Let's go into executive section. Do I have a motion to go into executive section on personnel matter?
Do I have a motion?
Let me think.
Don't move.
I'll say.
Mr. Paul made the motion and Mrs. May extended all of them to about saying aye. Uh, I'm back in regulations. And now we're going to go with number seventeen, which is approval of service and professional personnel. Do I have a motion? Mr. Paul made the motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Collins first. Uh, this is both.
High School Unpaid Medical Leave, Miranda Ruth, uh, from Ross County High School, effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty five through the end of the school year. Green Bay Electric Middle School, request to transfer Tippity Wayne as ECAT Special Education Classroom Bus Aid, effective for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Employment at Hillsborough Elementary School is, and this is from preferred recall list, calling a school prep as an ECAT Special Education Bus Aid, effective for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Presentation from Marlon Middle School, Ruth Melissa Robinson, as teacher of multi-subjects, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Page please.
She took Miss Stray's daughter.
Correct.
Uh, she was a nice woman.
Martha, she'll be here for the rest of the school year. Marlonson Elementary, again, uh, this is a employment from preferred recall list, it is Ashley Diller, as ECAT Special Education Classroom Aid, for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Another, uh, employment from preferred recall list is Carrie Curry, as ECAT Special Education Classroom Bus Aid, effective for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Requested transfer is Dawn Brewster, from ECAT Special Education Classroom Aid, kindergarten to an ECAT Special Education Classroom Aid, for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Employment of Adam Harmon, as head custodian at Marlon Elementary School, effective May seventh, twenty twenty five, for thirty eight days for the remainder of the twenty four, twenty five school year, and two sixty one days each year thereafter. Ms. Robinson, actually, each, she is so to say, fine. She took, uh.
Miss Stray.
She actually, I've been in her classroom and she's very energetic. She has, uh, Camry been watching her checks and that's her, actually, so.
Super duper person.
Go back to the elementary.
Yes, uh, at least. One, wait, one, sorry.
That's where she from, yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
Want to move to? Take Adam Harmon.
Okay.
And deal with that.
Secondly, okay, we're going to vote on all of them, but Adam Partman. At this half, all of them, but Adam Partman, all those in favor signify the saying aye. Uh, motion carries. Now, at this time, we want to vote on Adam Partman as head custodian of Marlon Elementary School, effective May the seventh, two thousand twenty five, for thirty eight days for the remainder of the two thousand twenty four, twenty five school year, and shall be two hundred and sixty one days each thereafter. Adam Harmon. All those in favor signify the saying aye. All those opposed? Same. I'm. Carrie, turn down, oh, five. Uh, matters of the board, Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, you know, several things here. Again, I want to reiterate to our staff, students, keep up the good work. Keep going, we don't have a warrant. The school calendar is still kicking up dirt. That's what I get calls over, is the school calendar. Is it? Is the cal- is the calendar event, do you?
There's something that is a state, and we have one way. You get approval today from the state department in Colorado, uh, France. But it is such a mistake, you all know.
I'd say, I don't, I don't know how people will accept that come in June next year. Um, I would encourage.
They did, but they can repeat, just wanted to.
I would encourage all of the citizens of Coach to, uh, support the SRS funding. I mean, that's a big deal, of course. And, um, and, you know, finally, and even. This is my last topic, and, uh. The federal funding, that, that rumor that you don't know about what's going on in England. And even the, and the reason I bring it up is because our treasurer. Could she's afraid to submit her final budget documents because of this. And she's.
I think that's what the national.
I think that's.
Is concerned.
Are we even, is there anybody? Have we even talked about discussion, about Plan B, if the federal funding is not coming in? Is there anything that we, what's, what's, is there anybody thinking about that?
Said the federal funds, which only gets, it pays for salaries, which is the title one, title two, title three, the type funds, yesterday, years ago, it's chapter one, it's title one. Some counties started out when things still could be discussed about federal funds being cut. And some counties went and started the transfer season and cutting all of the federally funded employees. Then they pulled those back, um, and I spoke with Michelle Blatter, state superintendent, she's been in contact with the federal government, with federal contacts in Washington, D.C., and we are being ordered, we do not, we are not getting any, uh, feedback that says that we will not get that funding. Now, here, that funding changes a little. It depends on your poverty levels, it depends on what the state has, so. We don't know, there's a little budget issue. But I think what, um, the federal is concerned about is maybe national first.
Uh, SRS?
Yes.
So there's no concern right now for being kind of. Funding cuts right now, right straight then. Not even thinking about funding. All right.
We would have had to done that. Most of our federal funds, we have the P C A.
Okay. That's all I ask.
Thank you. Um, those side parts, Dr. William.
Yes.
Here's a lot. We teach and stuff. We have testing, school is a part two. You got to keep teaching.
On next year.
Yeah. Yeah. Teaching and. The teachers are. Saying that, another teacher or not, it's a question.
Teachers who teach.
Teach to. Yeah.
Teachers who are rather playing. Discipline.
Another issue that they brought up is that, all, all I hear is education, if anyone, if they're a teacher, you can't go to their room, shut the door, teach. And then you gotta do that too. That's all.
Um, I, one of the things that Frosty and I learned on Saturday is we need to revisit all of our supplements, whatever you want to call it, jubileums, stipends, bonuses, they're all illegal. And limits, they're part of a contract.
Because that's what we were going to provide, I was giving you all, May twentieth, we.
Good.
Yeah, you see, we're looking into, uh.
Yeah, it's very right.
Been working on this. Because they include not only our athletic coaches, but also directors, the treasurer, the county, the coordinators for different like technology and federal programs, all of those, it's the two natures back and front, back and front life nation.
How long is that? Okay, like I say, I, we went to the conference there, and the other thing, uh, I'd like to mention is, and we've discussed it about the policies. Uh, they said that was one of the main things, is you need to go over your policies. And one example that the gentleman used was, I don't know what county it was, they went back, and the only one, there was that, the only one that tightened the horse up to the hitch in that post out there was the teacher. So, we need to go back to make sure that we're up, up to date on all of those, and the ones that we don't have, we need to get.
So, we use over four of us, four of our policies, and our contact there, the same caller, we work still diligently to make sure our policies are up to date now. With that said, they send us a list and say. It forms state code, state policy, and those are the ones, that's why you've been seeing by the link up, we were behind. And we've been trying to catch up so that we are in the correct, uh, state code, policy following us. So, that's like today, did the retention of one, we have, you know, two, last, um, the last meeting, so, we're trying. Um, we did, a lot of counties were, you know, were, were.
Said a lot of counties are getting it there, that, a lot of the problems come through that. Some of it, yeah.
I normally just visit without all, with all its ways in the past, it's fair, it's a whole bunch of.
So, we've got to see a whole bunch of revisions to policies because they have to follow them.
The only other thing that I don't know if you all can answer, can answer.
Are, uh, the curriculum, the house where we are, are we getting close on it? That idea?
So, they actually, they were hoping that they had it ready last week to put on this order agenda, um, but we didn't, so we'll bring it to you on the twentieth. It is now going up to students and families where it's being drafted, one more on, uh, and so we all agree.
Okay.
This should have been awesome to speak to that, please, it's a really detailed video, so everybody, they don't have, explain more of what the classes are done, it's got a class description, and it's got a camera, so they generally start. Pretty much, for everyone. How many pages did you say? Forty four. It's forty four pages, why did you tell, it's got, you know, required, you can read the book, it shows the areas, and I think, I'll tell everybody kind of. Any, tell them, when you are, when, when you get to the talk.
The only other thing I have was that, Miss Klein was not here, I want to help the training script, are we, with the underclassmen and all that.
It's not, they don't want to get this closer than sort of use their ministry.
They don't have any of the, uh, freshman, sophomore, and junior, I see you, but the other three classes, like. Yes, we're working on it, I just think.
That's a weekly update, and that's why I was going, we should, she should have brought it in with me, and she, she lists, you know, like. What they accomplished. Maybe, maybe at one whole session, uh.
Can we get a waiver for this school calendar, because I am getting a pile of kickbacks from that.
I heard we could, we could call Charleston and have them.
Can we get a.
Get more times.
We got a week to vote on that, so we want to get it passed up, though. One thing, we didn't understand on the survey, is people could go in and vote as many times as they wanted to. Yeah.
I had, I had one staff member told me they voted a hundred times.
Yeah, and that's what running up so much for the one, you didn't want staff member to tell you, oh, see, I don't know better than.
Yes, something works.
Because they could just keep voting, so whichever calendar they wanted, four or five people go together and run that.
I was like, I thought this was for us.
Can we get a favor from the state on that, because I am getting a lot of things, and from the, well, not only Green Bay area, I'm getting it from, area now too, it was Green Bay. Uh, anyways.
No, it's, I think it's, uh.
You know, it's hurting a lot of people.
Are there any way to get a waiver on it?
Yeah, I will suggest that you go to, uh, the state website, you know, look at the home groups. We do all get access, that we can free next year's calendars from the other counties that have breached, and you can see that a lot of them are very.
Well, I'm just here, okay? The other thing is, you know, Sherry sent us a copy of the budget, which was very deeply balanced, and it's supposed to.
But how much appearing over did we have?
The other thing is, you know, Sherry sent us a copy of the budget, which was very deeply balanced and it's supposed to, but how much carryover did we have?
That would be, uh, just a couple questions.
Yeah, so, uh, can we have prepared at the next board meeting to let us know how much carryover we got?
Yes.
We should have between three or four minutes. And carryover, but we're, we're always here, you know, we're broke, we don't have any money and I've never heard tradesmen not tell us that.
Well, you also have, like, Doug said, there's a certain percentage that the state requires us. It's something we have in emergency situation, I mean, we have all the buildings, if we have things that happen to them, we need to have a response.
I'm standing.
That covered that, turning to the, Mr. President.
It is, I bet how much carryover is going to, well, I don't, I didn't go to that, right? Okay.
One of the federal ones.
This break training is always the best.
Right? I don't have to take anything after Jude line in, we're going to have how many hours, thirteen hours? Twelve? Okay. Our next Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty five, beginning at sixteen a.m. with the Board of Education conference. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to do it.
Mr. McNamara made the motion, Miss Collins were seconded, all those in favor saying aye. You are hereby adjourned.